Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 10th, 2018. Approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor and council, I have one addition. It's for a special event request. We can put that under new business. If I'll just do it 15.5, our action item.
Move to approve the agenda with the addition.
I'll second that.
Motion by John, second by Chad. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, carried. Invocations from Seventh-day Adventist Church. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. Let us pray. Dear God in heaven, we thank you for the blessing of this day. Thank you, Lord, that your mercies are new every morning and that your goodness pervades all of us. Lord, we're living in a world where it seems that violence and hatred is on the increase. While your love still is around, we see many choosing a different path. Lord, we're blessed in Hutchinson where there is safety, there is goodwill, there is kindness that is here in this community. And so we just ask, Lord, tonight that your hand will be upon these city council members. Lord, in your word, you say that unless the Lord build the house, they labor in vain who build it. Unless the Lord watches the city, the watchmen work in vain. And so, Lord, today, we want to see commerce continue. We're so grateful for all the development that is taking place, and we're grateful for our police department, our fire department, and our emergency staff as well. But, Lord, ultimately, we are blessed in Hutchinson because you reside here in this place. So may you give the city council members wisdom tonight as they make decisions. Thank you for your goodness and thank you for your grace. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you.
Next, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? All right, we have a couple resolutions. Resolution number 14873, resolution accepting[197.26][197.26]$5,000 donation from the Hutchinson Health Hospital Auxiliary to the Hutchinson Fire Department. And B is resolution number 14874, resolution accepting $1,000 donation from Historic Hutch.
Mayor and council, the first item, donation from Hutchinson Health is actually going to go help with some of our laundering equipment. I think that's on the CIP for 2018. And so I know the fire chief, just want to make sure that was recognized tonight. And the $1,000 donation, this was regarding the reservation study at Historic Depot. They're filtering that through the city of Hutchinson.
I'd make motion to approve 14873 and 14874.
I'll second that.
Motion by John, second by Steve to approve both resolutions. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, carried. Next is public comment. I know that there's probably some people here that wants to address the council about invocation. That is on the council agenda, so I will take comment when we discuss that. Is there any otherbody that wanted to address the council? Yes, please come forward and state your name and address.
Hi, Morgan Baum, 925 Second Avenue, Southwest Hutchinson, Minnesota. I'm here to address the council with a formal invitation, a reextension of an invitation to an event on April 17th, a week from today, and also to all of the members of the public behind me and those of you watching at home. The Minnesota Citizens for the Arts is going to present the Creative Minnesota Study, specific to the Hutchinson area, on the 17th at Ridgewater in room 242 at both noon and 5:00 p.m. And this is a wonderful opportunity to learn about the impact, reach, and extent of the nonprofit arts and culture in Hutchinson, and the economic potential of arts in our region and area in like-sized cities. And the speaker is Sheila Smith, the Executive Director of the Minnesota Citizens for the Arts. And both events will be about a half an hour long with 30 minutes of comment, and we would love to see as many of you there as possible. Hutchinson is a strong arts community that I'm forever grateful for, and I'd love to share with you all the things that are happening and all the opportunity. So thank you very much, and namaste.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of March 27, 2018.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad and John. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consent agenda. This will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A, we have consideration for approval of Hutchinson J.C. Water Carnival requests. B is consideration for approval issuing transit merchant license to Tina Novotny. C is consideration for approval issuing transit merchant license to Virginia Daniels. D is consideration for approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the Crow River Cutters on May 21st, 2018, at Main Street Sports Bar. E is consideration for approval issuing carnival permit to J&amp;K Amusements, May 31st through June 3rd, 2018, at the Hutchinson Mall. F is consideration for approval of engineering service agreement with Erickson Engineering Company for the Second Avenue Southeast Bridge Replacement Construction Inspection and Observation. G is consideration for approval of authorizing $1,000 to purchase Smart Cycling Quick Guides. H is appointment of Steve Sinsley to the Police Civic Service Commission to May of 2021. I is claims appropriation and contract payments, register A. Anything want, anything pulled off?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Steve to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, carried. Consent agenda, number two, claims unappropriation, contract payments, register B. I do have a check on there to my company, so I will abstain from voting.
I'll make a motion to approve that one, too.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, carried. We do not have a public hearing. Since we have a lot of people here, we're, I'll move number 14 up. Ordinance number 18-785, ordinance amending section 30.18, regular meeting order of business to remove invocation, first reading, set second reading, and adoption for April 24th, 2018. Open it up for discussion, council.
So, worth letting, I know it's not a public hearing, but you invited people to give comments.
Yeah. I'm gonna allow 10 minutes of public comment. If you want this come up, I'll limit you to two minutes of this. Please come forward, state your name and address. I'm gonna address the council.
Hi, I'm Paul Baker, 864 Miller Avenue, Southwest. And I'm one of the pastors that's had the privilege to pray with you guys and gals, and I really appreciated it. I just want to speak in favor of keeping it going. We individually, as pastors, don't get the opportunity to pray like this very often, and in fact, our rotation is such that maybe once a year, you know, we get to do it. And I know this came up because somebody forgot their time, you know, and he's apologized to me and to the other pastors for forgetting that. But just want to speak in favor of this continuing. It doesn't take too much time of your meeting, and I think that there's a humility involved when we admit that maybe we need to listen to a greater power, whatever we may conceive that greater power of being. And I know when I pray, I like to tell a short little joke and then go into maybe a wisdom saying or something like that. And I hope that you've enjoyed the prayers that I've shared with you, and I've enjoyed being with you. So I simply speak in favor of keeping it going. And I recognize the argument in the other way, too, you know. But just want to say thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I'm Chuck Pearson, transplant from Martin, One County, retired farmer. And I'm also chaplain of the Giddians. But my thoughts here tonight are not from the Giddians, they're my own personal thoughts, because we haven't, as Giddians, addressed this at all and haven't had time to do so. But speaking at church and other places around the community, we've, the comments in the paper were much discussed. And I had a little saying in my back, my Bible, that I've had there for many years. And I'd like to read it to you. I read it to other people, and they thought I should put it in the paper. And your editor said, if I put it in the paper, it'll be beyond the fact, because you're gonna vote tonight. So he said he advised me to come here tonight, so that's why I'm here. And the little poem is entitled "The Difference." "I got up early one morning and rushed right into the day. I had so much to accomplish that I didn't have time to pray. Problems just tumbled around me, and heavier came each task. But why didn't God help me?" I wondered. He said, "But you didn't ask." "I wanted to see joy and beauty, but the day toiled on, gray and bleak. I wondered why God didn't show me." But he said, "But you didn't seek." "I tried to come into God's presence. I used all my keys at the lock. God gently and lovingly chided, 'My child, you didn't knock.'" "I woke up this morning and paused before entering the day. I had so much to accomplish that I had to take time to pray." And the author is unknown. I've got some copies here if you guys would like to have them.
Thank you.
There's one other comment was made on...
Sir, your two minutes are up. Thank you. Your two minutes are up. Thank you.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Respect the other ones that want to talk.
I'm Jerry Messner, 935 Jorgensen Street, Hutchinson. I'm in support, totally in favor of keeping prayer here. Listening to the prayer tonight, all we're asking for you all is godly wisdom. And godly wisdom is something that we all need at all times. I'm mindful of what happened in Florida. And I got an email after that, and one of the, and this is a story, obviously, one of the students cried out to God and said, "Why did you let this happen?" And God said, "Because I'm no longer welcome in the schools. I don't want to see that happen here." God has always got to be welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Mr. Mayor and the council, my name is Jack Sandberg. I live at 571 Jewel Road. And I'd like to encourage you to adopt the resolution to remove the invocation. I don't intend to be flippant, and I don't intend any disrespect, but I want to firmly make a couple of assertive remarks. First of all, invocation I see as being used as a substitute for prayer. If you put prayer in the agenda, people might object, but invocation somehow sounds cleaner. In effect, invocation is a stronger word. If you look up invoke in the dictionary, it means to call on a higher power. That has a positive sense, but invoke also means to conjure or to summon with incantations. And I would challenge the council to carefully consider what differences there may be between calling on a higher power, praying, and summoning with incantations. Second thing, I think I would encourage the council to consider the purpose of the invocation. For instance, does the council truly believe that having invocation increases their probability of success? Does it believe that the outcomes will be better due to supernatural intervention? Another thing I think about is just the idea that, and this is a personal belief, but I want to express it, that I find it distasteful when individuals in the community express lack of solidarity by standing in front of a public forum and claiming special powers to get in touch with a higher power. Third thing, I want to mention the use of the word "we" or "us" in public invocations. When the invocation was made today, I was not included in the "we," and I find that I'm being left out. I think when people use the word "we" in giving invocations, what they really mean is the subset of those here gathered that believe the same, or at least nearly the same as I do, that a higher power exists, and that invoking it at this meeting is both appropriate and has the potential to be supernaturally effective in improving the outcomes. So I would suggest that the council strike the word "we" from the invocations and substitute a more accurate statement of what's intended. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Everett Hanke, from 1400 Sherwood Street, Hutchinson. I'm not telling you anything you don't know, but our country was founded on the principles of prayer. And I find that prayer is being deleted from many areas in our society. I personally feel uncomfortable with that. It's been noted that our neighbors do not use prayer at council meetings, and I think that's okay, if that's their choice. I'd like us to continue with what we feel is important to us. And I know there are people of different faiths here in our community, and I think all they need to do, if they want to be heard, is let the council know they'll get on your prayer list, and I'm sure the council would accommodate them. I'm for continuing the prayer.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Craig Bishop, 221 Fremont, here in Hutchinson. I would encourage the council to keep the invocation in the prayer, simply for the fact that I always believe in calling out to God and helping God and asking God for wisdom, because I know in my life, I don't have all the answers. And I just think it's, for the situations you guys are in and the complicated problems that you have, and a lot of decisions you have to make, and a lot of different kinds of issues, I just think it's wise for us to always ask God, who is, I believe is Christ, to help you in your decision-making. So I just want to encourage you to keep that invocation in. Thank you.
Do you have time for one more?
Yes, I'm the one. If my people...
Sir, could you name an address, please?
My name's Greg Curry, 955 Milwaukee Avenue. If my people who call me by name will humble themselves, pray and seek my face, and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven, and they will forgive, and I will forgive their sin and heal their land. And I think there's a lot of healing that needs to be done. And we've been blessed with industry and commerce, and religion is one of them. And I guess a comment is that when you, when someone lists how many cities don't do it, as far as prayer goes, you should include the ones that you talked to, and they did. See ya.
Thank you. Guess what's your pleasure? Well, start. I know this is a sensitive subject for people, and I respect that. I hope you know that. And I appreciate the pastors who've taken their time over the years to come and say prayers, and their thoughts, some jokes, and so on. And I also want to thank people who have reached out and shared their thoughts with me. I've spoken, had some good conversations with a couple people, had some messages on the phone. Those were in support of keeping it, as were the two conversations. I know another person who supported doing away with the invocation, and another person said they could see both sides of it. So, kind of the gamut. For myself, I may not always be a faithful churchgoer, but I do consider myself a Christian, and I believe in the power of prayer. I also believe prayer is an opportunity to have a personal connection with God. And there are times I'll say a prayer myself before I come to a council meeting. I also can't think of anything more personal than someone's faith. And as an elected official representing all members of the community, I believe I have a responsibility to respect the feelings of others, not impose my religious beliefs on others in my government capacity. While the council is the intended audience of the prayer, it's not a community prayer. It's really intended for the council. The prayer also reaches others in attendance at our meetings, and also those at home that might be watching. Because of that, I've always been a little uncomfortable, you know, having the invocation as part of our council meetings. And I know that the Supreme Court has ruled in favor of allowing that. That really hasn't made me feel any more comfortable about the practice, because, again, it's pretty much Christian in nature. And I know that, again, as we've talked about already, there's different faiths and different beliefs within the community. Some people have said that maybe the prayers should refer more generally to God. But the Supreme Court ruling has stated that within the narrow limits, we really can't dictate what is said. And personally, I'd feel uncomfortable with even doing that, because then I would also be trying to impose my beliefs on the pastors. I think we should also keep in mind that if some other faith wanted to give an invocation, the Supreme Court has ruled, and our policy dictates that as well, that we would need to provide that opportunity. And while I would welcome that in a lot of cases, we need to recognize the possibility exists that requests could come from a church less to the liking of the community. And I think one example of that in a little different situation is what took place in Belle Plaine at their Veterans Memorial a little while ago. Others have suggested a moment of silence as an alternative, and that's certainly private, personal, and for each participant. And I think, you know, it's, is reasonable. But that doesn't mean everyone is saying a prayer. Plus, if that's acceptable, why not suggest that the council members do that before they come to the meeting, and do that on their own? So that's really why I brought the subject up in the first place. And as we started having a moment of silence when a pastor wasn't able to make it for some reason, it just made me wonder about that, and then made me wonder about my feelings with the invocation in general. And that's why I brought it up, then. And I think, you know, granted, the invocation is religious in nature. While the Pledge of Allegiance that we also do is civic, has a civic foundation to it. And the pledge also recognizes God and country within that. And I personally believe that's more appropriate for a government meeting. And that's why I think that so many other entities have used the pledge to open their meetings. It was suggested about, what about the other communities that, when I was doing my research, that actually do invocation. And the ones I looked at, and all I did was look at the meeting agendas, and I didn't find one that did it. The only one that did anything was Glencoe that has a moment of silence after the Pledge of Allegiance. Not that I'm saying that others don't do it. It's just out of that list, from other regional centers, other local entities, other neighboring cities and counties. I didn't find any that did. It isn't to say I don't think that council members, residents, pastors, churches, should not say a prayer for the city council and other community leaders. I know a lot do, and I encourage that and welcome that. However, I just don't believe it should be part of our meetings for the reasons I gave before. Personally, I'd prefer that we dispense with the invocation and instead open our meetings with the pledge. With that, I'm open to what others feel.
John, you got any comment?
Well, I agree with, a lot with what Steve said. I, too, have been uncomfortable with it. And, you know, potentially, I'm the only person on city council that's non-Christian. I tend to go more to Native American beliefs. I feel more comfortable with that. I guess I've got a chemistry degree, so I, you know, that's, I really believe in that. I'm not, I'm not opposed to any type of religion. It was Jack, I think, talked about the meaning of invocation, what an invocation is. It's calling us for assistance, for guidance. I enjoy that part of it. And my concern really is that, that there are, there's a minority in our community that aren't represented in the invocation. And I feel that it's just as important to represent the minority as the majority. I think it's maybe even more important to represent the minority. I received several emails, responded to one of them. There was one that you couldn't respond to. Had a couple of, actually had a couple of phone calls today for, I spent about an hour and a half on the phone, between two people on the phone. And we discussed this, and what came up was, you know, this was anti-prayer, anti-God. And I said, it's not, not really that. It's not, it's not anti-religion by any means. And I think, you know, we had discussed this back in June. You know, that's maybe when it first came up. And so the problematic part of it for me is that in the three and a half years that I've been on city council, I've never had a non-Christian person do the invocation. And that seems problematic to me. So I guess that's about what I have to say.
Thanks, John. Chad?
Well, this is one of those fun subjects where we're gonna piss a third of the people off no matter what we do, so that's fun.
It's part of the job, right?
Yeah. So personally, I don't have strong feelings one way or the other on the invocation, but I think the general public would like to keep it. But I got quite a few phone calls and initially when Steve asked about it, I was okay getting rid of it, but I haven't seen very much evidence that the community would support that. So right or wrong, I think the community wants to keep it.
I guess my only feeling with that is who is really it intended for? That's, that's the only question, or comment.
And then, Chad?
To answer Steve's question there, I don't know that the general public cares who it's intended for, but... So that's my two cents.
Well, you know, it's kind of funny because I, you know, you watch sports. Everybody says a prayer when the guy goes up to bat. He doesn't say it out loud, but you can tell he's praying, he wants to hit the ball, I guess. You know, and personally, I was on the fire department for 23 years. You know I said a prayer before I went into a burning building. I mean, it was, and growing up, you know, we, I can remember going over and seeing my dad in the combine praying the rosary as, as he's running combines. So, I mean, there was prayer in my background all the time. So I guess I would like it to stay with the council.
Just another thing reflecting on, you know, when I first got involved in the city business, I was on a planning commission. And, and one of the people that was on planning commission was Fareed Karamboy. I don't know if I'm pronouncing his name right, but, but he was a Sunni Muslim, worked over in Winstead, I think at Millbrant, financial guy or anything like that. Went to, went to a conference, planning zoning conference with him down in Rochester. And every morning, he went to morning prayer. And, you know, he wasn't out there. I know our kids went to Montessori with Mrs. Fareed. Great people. And I know there, you know, I know that there's numerous Muslim members of our community. I know that there's Hindu people. They seem to pray in their homes. You know, they're not, they're not out there in the, in the, in the community. They're not, they're, they're not a brick and mortars church or anything like that. And that's, I just don't feel that they're being represented. I mean, you know, I wish, you know, the ministerial association is pretty much in charge of the prayer, and I really wish they'd reach out to these other entities and bring them into the, into the loop, you know?
To be fair, those other entities could reach out too.
Well, but whose responsibility is it?
Exactly. Well, I mean, is it the pastors or is it the people out? If they want to, they could.
Right, they could, but the ministerial association is, it's not like a board or a commission? I mean, and they don't, you know, so when does the ministerial association meet? There aren't any public meetings? That, that's what's problematic.
I would guess they're not a very aggressive group.
Right, right.
Well, I don't, any, anything that I've ever joined, most of the time, I don't think I've had people running after me to have me join something. I, you know, you have to be outgoing and, you know, you gotta take the first step too. I mean, if you want to belong to something, you go and join.
But, I mean, I think, I had said that before, I thought that was my challenge to the ministerial association back in June. I thought it was.
Ministerial Association meets the first Thursday of the month.
Can we ask maybe two pastors that are here, would you guys know by chance?
Yeah, but we don't remember getting that challenge. So if you want to give us that challenge now, we'll take it.
Yeah, I, I, I definitely give you that challenge.
We don't meet June.
No?
Just September to May.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we don't meet in the summer at all, so.
You got it the way through it.
Stick around for the winter.
Any other discussion?
Mayor Council, maybe I'll give you more of the, the technical aspect of what's in front of you tonight. Per our, obviously, city, city code and city ordinances, the invocation is currently listed within our city code as a, as an order of business for the city council. Since it is listed in our city code and ordinance is required to change anything regarding, regarding the city code, all ordinances require at least two readings. And I think with recent state law, two readings need to take part at least 10 days, or need to happen at least 10 days apart from each other. So what's in front of you tonight for consideration would be a first reading. And all that simply notes is that, you know, you've agreed to the, to the reading of the ordinance as presented. Obviously, you can approve that or you can deny that. If it's approved, if the first reading is approved, the second reading would be scheduled to, to take place on April 24th, which at that time, there would be an action to approve or deny the, the full reading of the ordinance. It's very well possible tonight. If it, if it doesn't move forward, that, it ends at this point. So it's up to the council whether or not you want to consider a first reading of the ordinance.
We don't have another council member with us, but I really didn't want this to be a split vote anyway. Even though, you know, I'm the one who initiated it. I did it partly because I know this has come up, or people have expressed feelings in other times, and I, as I mentioned, I've been a little uncomfortable with it myself. But I would be willing to let the ministerial association try to...
Move forward with their challenge?
And, again, that's just an opportunity to try to reach out to some of the other people within the community, so. So with that, I guess I'm comfortable with saying that I want to give that an opportunity first.
You want to table it then?
Um, right now, I would just, do we have to, it's on the agenda, so...
It's on the agenda, so there needs to either be an action to approve, deny, or table. The issue with tabling it is...
You gotta bring it back sometime.
Sometime. Well, that's, that's, that's the opportunity to see what happens with the challenge.
So, I mean, you could sit, you could table it for four months or five...
I'll just make a motion to deny it at this time.
I'll second a motion by Steve, second by myself to deny. Any other discussion?
My wife will be happy. She wasn't real thrilled about me and I discussed bringing this up.
And call a motion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
We don't want to have a split vote, so.
And so, obviously, the first reading was not approved, so there will not be a second reading, unless it's brought back for reconsideration as a first reading.
I just want to remind everybody there's a challenge out there.
I just want to say I appreciate your courage as a Christian for what you stood for to, to be representative as well, to bring it up.
And I'll say I'm willing to bring it up again to you, but, again, I want, I want this to be something that if we do make a change, people understand it a little bit more. And we've tried to make it work and be more inclusive and all that, so I have hope and faith that that can happen too.
Thanks for everybody coming. All righty, we're gonna move back. Chief Hatton? We have Hutchinson Police Services Annual Report. Chief Hatton, thank you for your patience.
Absolutely.
Challenge.
I don't know that, I don't know that I can begin to...
Welcome in.
So nobody wants to listen?
Come on, man, he's right there, he heard ya.
I thought at least some of these people wanted to hear this from me. Apparently, none of them do.
Trying not to look to take a chance like that. No, I understand. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Again, it's one of the directors that stands before you to give their annual report. And every year, I'll be honest with you, every year I struggle a little bit in regards to the police department's annual report. It is lengthy, there's a lot of material in there. And so I try to pick and choose different topics than what I've talked about in previous years, and yet try to make sure that it's information that's relevant in regards to things that are going on in our community that obviously, obviously impact our community. So with that, I generally try to start with this. So this is, this is our staffing history, if you will. The bottom line, 2017 is where we're currently at. Roughly about just over 14,000 population. We have 23 sworn officers. 16 of those officers are signed in patrol. We have one community service officer. We have 10 civilian office and dispatch centers, or dispatch communication specialists. As you know, we run a fully functional 911 communication center. And then the nine hospital security people, both full-time and part-time out at the hospital that, that deal with security. And, and as you can see, it is the, the hospital security over the last four or five years that have created the largest growth. And again, just a reminder that that service that we provide for the hospital is actually covered, the costs are covered by the hospital.
For the general public, are those full-time police officers or are they just security guards or what's their role?
They are not. So they are, in, in a lot of ways, look at them as community service officers, they are civilian employees. Now, the fortunate part is, not all, but a, but a fair amount of them are individuals who are either going through law enforcement training currently or that have recently finished law enforcement training and are trying to get into the law enforcement field. But we also have some very excellent security people out there that, that that's not their goal to become a police officer, they're just extraordinarily good security officers out at the hospital. So it, it's a mix of both, of people trying to get into law enforcement and those folks who just want to be security out at the hospital.
And we have hired some onto the department that originally came into the department as hospital security.
That is correct. If, if memory serves me right, we have, we have moved or transferred or promoted four people from the hospital security program into full-time police officers. And one was, actually went from hospital security to a full-time position in communications. So it is, it is a benefit, I believe, not only for the hospital but for the police department in regards to hiring, recruiting, and maintaining or retaining employees. So here's just a couple of, some 2017 accomplishments. Obviously, we work with other city departments and the community to accomplish the end statements developed by city council. That continues, that is our mission in regards to trying to meet the needs of this community and, and other departments as needed. One of the, one of the biggest things that we accomplished last year was this, and it doesn't sound like much, but it's an upgrade to the civil defense siren system. As you know, we have nine civil defense sirens located throughout the city of Hutchinson. Up until this system was put into place, every month when we would blow those sirens as a test, we would have to find nine employees and get them out to each one of those sirens so that they could physically see and hear that siren rotate and sound. And with this system, now we're able to, through a computer system, we're able to make sure that those work without actually having to disperse people to those, to those siren posts. So it's not only more efficient, saves time and money and all of that, but it's actually a quicker system. So if we, anytime during the week or day, a siren pole fails, that system would pick up on that and we could be notified and get a repair person in there sooner. And obviously, this time of year is, is a significant need for the possibility that those sirens would be put into service. A side note to that, this system also has the ability, if the entire county wished to connect their sirens to this system, they could. It would take a significant upgrade for, for those other communities within, within the county to do that, but that is a possibility if they wish. Police and fire training grounds improvements, we've had that, that shooting range out there for probably since the mid-'70s, I'm going to say safely. And it was just in need of some repairs. Those dirt embankments that surround it, obviously, over the course of time eroded away. And so we went in and, and thanks to a lot of work, and we, we raised those banks and made it a whole lot safer to ensure that, that rounds that are being fired inside the range stay within that range. And, and there are other improvements that'll occur to that facility, but that was one of the larger ones. The, the body worn camera and in-car camera program is now fully operational. The, the body cameras went into operation in April of last year and the cars, the cameras in the cars went in place in December. Now, we've had cameras in cars for a number of years, but what we did when this upgrade in December was now we, the cameras, the officers wearing the cameras that are in the car are exactly the same. It's all on one system, we're not operating off of two different camera systems.
Dan, can I ask a question? On the training grounds and the range, is there a thought of actually enclosing that at all, or would there be an advantage to that? Is it better to be open more?
It's actually, it's actually better for it to be open in a couple of different ways. First off, it allows us more flexibility because it's open, we can get a squad car in there and our officers can, can do some training in that aspect. It allows us to do a lot more in an outside setting than it does in an inside setting. The other part that, that is beneficial is, as part of our licensing, we are required to have training in adverse weather conditions. And so we literally go out and have to go out in, in inclement weather. Mostly for us, we, we try to do it in the wintertime so we make sure that it's cold, obviously, and we conduct that training. And so if we had an indoor facility, that just becomes problematic, yeah.
The, the cost of an indoor shooting range too is...
It's expensive.
Expensive.
Yes.
Plus, you still have other people come out and use the range, correct?
Absolutely, we do, yeah. Metro City's come out, Minneapolis comes out, the BCA comes out, State Highway Patrol has been out. A number of different agencies across the state have been out at our facility to utilize both the range and the, our 360-degree shoot house. Okay? So then, obviously, the other thing we've done, both for the community and for the department, we've implemented a chaplaincy program so that in times of, of crisis, when, when a family is, is in need, if they've lost a family member, this is an opportunity, if they choose, the family chooses, if they don't have a personal chaplain but they would like someone to talk to, that's, that's available in those situations. But it's also internal too, for somebody, a member within the department, for someone to turn to. And then, obviously, you, last year, you guys approved, as a, as a council approved the, the purchase of the special response truck to replace the one we currently have. And, and I would love to be able to tell you it's here, or at least be able to give you a date. And the only thing I can tell you with, with almost absolute certainty is it'll arrive sometime this year. When, that's up for debate still.
It's on the assembly line.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Yeah, exactly, yeah, it's somewhere in that process. And then, the last, well, the other thing I want to touch base on is, is the speed signs that you saw with the construction project on School Road, that was in conjunction, Police Department, Camp Nine, work in regards to trying to make that happen, to see exactly what the response was, both from the community and, and the overall speeds. And, and anyhow, I think without question, I think it's been a success. And the, the issue starts to become, you know, maybe how do we, how do we utilize that or, or expand that in a, in a meaningful way? You don't want to just put those signs on every street all over town, they lose its effectiveness and it's not necessary. And so, we need to maybe have that discussion about how, how many of those, if, if any more we put out, and if so, do we, when do we do it? Do we do it under major construction projects? All of those things, I think we should have a conversation as we move forward.
Yeah, maybe mention the, the mobile unit that John appeared...
Right, yeah, and we do have a mobile unit that allows us to address neighborhood concerns, which, and John and his staff are kind enough to, that they've been putting that out at different locations in the community and...
I know, at last council, at last council, I think we talked about, and Kent said they are movable this after...
Found a post in the ground.
Found a post and...
Right, right.
Move them around.
And again, there's a, there's a, I think we want to be very careful that we don't want to just be moving that sign every week or every other week. I mean, I think where it's located, my personal opinion, it should be there for an extended period of time, and before we contemplate moving it somewhere else.
So, you said, though, we have a mobile unit on wheels?
It's a trailer.
Yeah, okay. And that's ours? Because I know several years ago, we had to borrow one from the county or something.
That's right.
We purchased one.
Is that up on School Road North?
North.
North, yeah.
Should be about right across from LDS Church, so, right up in the area.
Oh, that's good, 'cause I had a resident from up there wanting one, so, she'll be happy.
Sure. And, and then, just in connection with that too, we have, the Police Department has what's known as a traffic service request. So, it's a way for us to track, if a citizen calls and, and wants, or complains about speeding on their street, we complete what's known as a traffic service request. The officers are assigned that request, and they go out and, and they document how many days they've been out there, how many, how long during a period of time, if they've issued citations or warnings, or what they've done. So, that when somebody comes back and says to us, "Hey, I called a week ago and no one was ever out there," we now have an ability to go back and track and show exactly what work we have, or maybe haven't done. But, for the most part, the work we've done in that neighborhood, and, and what we found, that, yeah, there was a lot of speeding, or no, there wasn't any, you know, we didn't find any people violating the speed law. So, it's a, it's a good way to work in combination with that. And then, the last thing I'll say about this is, in, in regards to accomplishments, and this really isn't an annual, or this isn't the, just this year accomplishment, something we do every year. So, last year alone, the Police Department employees had a total of thirty-five-hundred-and-tw-uh, hours of, of internal and external training, which averaged to about eighty-one hours, or just about eighty-two hours per person on the department. And the reason I bring this up is because, you know, obviously, with all the news that you hear out there about police officers not being properly trained, or not receiving enough training, this is a circumstance where we do a lot of training, and we stress a lot of training, and, and that our officers do things right. And we do it in a, in a cost-effective way as much as we can, so when it talks about internal and external training, if we do external training, those officers that do external training then come back and train in-house whenever possible, so that we get the most bang for our buck with, with that type of training. Last, you can see, here's our calls for service, they increased by almost two thousand calls to eighteen thousand nine hundred and thirteen. And you can see in that trend lined up there, that that is, that those calls are increasing. Yet, our population isn't increasing, or at least the official population isn't increasing, we'll see what, what the next census brings. But, but that is an issue for us in regards to the number of calls for service. And at the bottom there, you see that there were nine special response team call-outs. So, obviously, we partner with McLeod County on our special response team, both Hutch and McLeod County are involved, and, and we had nine call-outs that were of significant enough nature that we felt we needed that kind of training and expertise to be called out to that scene. This is another quite alarming statistic. These are a number of arrests last year, and they jumped from three-seventy-nine to four-hundred-and-twenty-two. And the only thing I'll say about that is, just note that that is total arrests. So, not all four-hundred-and-twenty people, or twenty-two people went to jail, they may have been issued a criminal citation. So, for example, somebody who shoplifted at Walmart, the officers go out there, they make an arrest, they issue a criminal citation, and so, that would count as an arrest, but that person wasn't necessarily taken to jail.
Wouldn't you, I mean, if you want to turn it on its head, doesn't that just mean you're doing a real good job?
Well, there's, there's a couple of ways to look at that, yeah, yeah. We'd like to say that, but obviously, you know, again, keeping on the theme of shoplifting, theft is our largest problem in our community, it has been for, for years. And so, it's, even though a lot of arrests get made, and the, and the security folks in these stores, they do great work, you know, it's really, it's really an, an issue within our community, in every community, not just ours, but in every community. I just want to touch base a little bit on Part One crimes. The good news is, is they're, they're too, well, the bad news is, they're too high, the good news is, is they're trending downward. And so, you know, we like to see that, obviously, but when you're talking about Part One crimes, you're talking about significant crimes that, that are occurring in, in our community.
Thank you, maybe explain Part One crimes?
Sure. So, we're talking about homicides, we're talking about rape, robbery, aggravated assault, burglary, high-dollar thefts, vehicle theft, and arson. And again, I'll, I'll reiterate what I just said, theft is the driving factor here. You know, we didn't have any homicides, thank goodness, in our community. So, so those are not the major contributor to those pieces. It is, it is that theft, and the aggravated assault is another one that's high. Burglaries are high in regards to, may not be a burglary of a house, but of a secured structure.
So, again, with theft, that's a personal property thefts typically versus shoplifting? And where I'm going, I guess, is just the neighborhood watch?
It really gets into the dollar value of what is stolen.
Okay.
In regards to, for Part One or Part Two.
But, is that still more what you're seeing from a residential area, or is it a mix?
Well, you know, we, we've actually had a number of cases, and to bring one out, for example, we had a, a large number of storage units that were broken into. And that, that caused that number to be disproportionate. And, and it was a, a group of individuals who were breaking into a number of storage units, and then, they had rented a storage unit, so they were stealing from one and placing it in another. So, they were, the stolen property, at least initially, wasn't ever leaving the property, and they would, you know, then they would pull it out at a different time as they went along. So, and that got to be a very, very high dollar amount. And, and finding the owners of all of that property was difficult. We knew the people who rented out storage units that had them broken into, but not everybody who had their unit broke into knew exactly what was inside their storage unit. So, it, it did get to be a little problematic. I put this one up there in regards to citations and warnings. I have heard a number of comments from, from community members about that police officers need to be out there doing more traffic enforcement, writing tickets and all of that. And I just bring this up to show you that in seventeen, the large number of traffic stops that we made, and I'll be honest with you, I don't, I don't look too hard in regards to if my officers are writing citations, or if they're giving warnings, I leave that up to their judgment in regards to the severity of the violation, and the circumstances surrounding that violation. I just like to see those contacts, because even if they're stopping somebody and giving them a warning, they're trying to correct behavior habits. And, and that's the critical piece for me, I think, in regards to what makes it safer. And I tell people this all the time also, you as a council, don't, don't get me wrong, I would welcome this, but you could double the number of officers I have on my police force, and I couldn't make traffic violations go away. It's a personal choice. All right, our, our deal here is to try to educate, advise, and warn people about the hazards of driving, run and stop signs, speeding, and all of that.
Dan, you can say it out loud, you can't fix.
Maybe when I retire one day, not today. And so, I just wanted to bring that, that statistic up to show you that, that the officers are out there, they are doing a lot of traffic enforcement throughout the community. Nuisance properties is, is a fairly large issue, we've talked about it in previous years. And you can start to see, like, last year, we had fifty-five cases, the year before, we had fifty-eight. And so, we're starting to see that issue. And, and the couple of points I want to bring out there is, from a Police Department standpoint, our effort is to gain compliance, to help citizens, whatever their circumstance, whatever the, whatever caused the property to become the nuisance that it is. And a lot of times, it can be financial. And so, just going in and issuing a citation and sending them to court about that nuisance problem, doesn't necessarily help, and in some cases, could even hurt the situation. So, our goal is to work with those people to try to resolve that. But, what does that result in? It takes a long time to resolve some of these issues. And neighbors are understandably a little impatient, they want that property straightened out and fixed up. But, I just wanted everybody to know here in regards to, that we love to hear from neighbors about a house, to make sure that we know about it, sometimes we don't. I think most of the time, we're aware of the property. But, it does take us some time, in a lot of cases, to gain that compliance, or to give that resident enough time to straighten their property and fix their property up.
And Dan, just to piggyback that, you know, we've, and we're all aware of it, we had a property, took us over three years. And that's the due process of the system that we have in place in America. And so, that's where, I know, people get frustrated, and they get upset, and they don't think we're doing anything, but you can run into a case where it takes you three years.
That's correct. If you have, if you have a property owner who refuses to cooperate with us in any way, shape, or form, it can be a long process.
Well, then you have to search out the property owner sometimes too.
And that's also an issue, absolutely. So, I just want you to see kind of that, that trend of where we're at, roughly how many cases, we, now that we're, we have a, a system in place within the city, we have an officer assigned to this very issue, not full-time, obviously, they're, they work day shift, and they're, they're covering the regular calls, but as part of their duties on, while they're at work, it's to address these issues. And you can start to see over the last three years that we've had this program now, what, what we're starting to see in regards to the number of cases that we have open that we're working on.
Do you see, since nuisances can be a variety of forms...
Yes.
Have you run into situations where our ordinance could be revised, or, you know, in certain ways to help address certain areas? Or have we looked at other city ordinances for other cities to maybe see where we could, ours could be improved a little bit to help out? Again, just asking.
Yeah, no, there's always, there's always that opportunity that we try to take a look at, and we try to look at our, our individual community itself. For example, a great majority, well, a significant portion, I don't know if it's a majority, a significant portion of our community have single-car garages and single-car driveways. Very few of those homes have single vehicles in them. And so, we have vehicles...
Who are you talking about?
We have vehicles parked in the street, we have vehicles parked on the yard, we have vehicles in the, in the yards that don't run, and so, that's a significant issue. And, and there are communities, and we have a, we have a limit, but that becomes problematic. You could stiffen the ordinance, but I don't know that you could really get the problem to go away, you just cause more people a problem. So, it's really a balancing act in some of those issues. But, but we do take a look at that in regards to, if our ordinance that we currently have is too strong in regards to, it's not reflecting what's happening through the majority of our community, or if it's not strong enough, and we need to take a look at, at strengthening it. For the most part, we found the ordinance is pretty much trying to meet the needs that we have, it's, it's really just trying to gain compliance of those, of the citizens to, to, to do that, you know? And, and there are hobbyists, you know, people who want to work on cars, and, and there are all those different dynamics that, that happen, people who want to collect things, and it, it, it's a unique challenge from time to time, to say the least.
So, do you want your van back, Steve?
Here's an, here's an area, we talked about a little bit about the, the growth in regards to the department, and that's hospital security. But, you can start to see, it's a fairly steady demand that we have out there. You know, over the last three years, over a thousand calls for service out there. And, and I bring this up to say this, these thousand calls would be there, if we had a security officer out there or not, it would take away our officers off the street from being able to handle the calls. We wouldn't respond as quickly, because it would take us the, you know, the two to three to four minutes to get out to the hospital. So, our response is better, because we have an officer right there. The staff out there is a lot safer because of that. I think we're a lot safer, because we have an officer who can prevent a whole lot of things from getting any worse, and we get to keep our officers on the street, for the most part. Sometimes our officers get called out there, I mean, we had an incident out there the other day that required not only our security person, but three officers out there to, to help deal with, with the circumstances out there. And so, staff appreciates it. Again, it's also a huge benefit in regards to being able to promote people to becoming full-time police officers. So, I truly think this is a real win-win situation in regards to our partnership with, with Hutchinson Health out there.
Yeah, in regards to that partnership, Hutchinson Health is paying the city for those officers.
That's correct, yes.
But, that goes back to that end statement that you referred to, that two-point-three, and that's all about partnerships with the community to help make the community safer. So, this is a great example.
Yes, I, I couldn't agree more.
I think the doctors appreciate having muscle out there when they need it.
Yeah, I know the nurses appreciate it.
That's what I was gonna say.
I know the nurses appreciate it, 'cause again, I'm not trying to take anything away from the doctors, but that nursing staff out there, they deal with those clients, you know, every minute of every day that they're out in the ER, those patients come in, and, and some of those patients aren't necessarily in a good mood.
Cooperative?
So, yeah, they, they have their hands full out there, and, and I think it is a good partnership. Here's an area that we, that we really try to keep a, keep an eye on, so we have, from dispatch to arrival time, so from the time our comm center folks give a message, give a call to an officer on true emergency calls, nine-one-one calls that are medicals, or, and, and a medical calls are the ones that we use as our standard piece, because we know there isn't any delay from the officer being dispatched to, to being en route to that call, and that's what we want. But, we are starting to see, again, we're talking about seconds here, but we are starting to see a bit of an increase. And to be honest with you, I don't have a definitive answer. It, it could be just our additional calls that, that cause our officers to be delayed, it could be the increase in traffic in and around the community. It could be our officers are just driving even that much more cautiously and safely to try to avoid getting into an accident on the way there. It could be a number of things, but that's an area that we are definitely watching. I think, and I, and I'm happy with three minutes from, from time of dispatch to arrival in our community, but it's certainly an area that we want to keep track of and make sure that those times don't, don't continue to get, get much more of a delay than this.
Now, Dan, these are nine-one-one calls?
These are nine-one-one true emergency calls, and what we use as the border for that is a medical, a car accident with injuries. We know our officers, when they hear that call go out... We know our officers, when they hear that call go out without delay, they're headed to that call. Now, obviously, we receive some nine-one-one calls that are, someone will call and say their bike was stolen. Just because it comes in as a nine-one-one call doesn't mean we respond as if it were a nine-one-one emergency. I know, it's amazing, but it does happen.
With that, though, well, Main Street project, you're probably thinking about how to adjust for that, I imagine.
Exactly, so one of the things that we did a number of years ago was, we actually split the city in half and we have districts, and we try to have officers in each district all the time. And that really came to prove to be worthwhile when the school bridge was under construction. And so we worked really hard at making sure at least an initial officer could continue to respond within that three-minute window on true emergencies, and that will be the same thing with Highway fifteen when that's done. Although, again, working through those issues, you know, and knowing that that construction project will be in sections and in stages, that will make it a whole lot easier really for both police, fire, and ambulances to respond. Here's some unique kind of numbers that we're seeing. So we do vulnerable adult investigations, and when this says vulnerable adult intake, what that is, is an initial report to us. Somehow, some way it came in of a vulnerable adult that was possibly a victim of a crime. And we're seeing a huge increase in the number of cases, as you can see here, last year we investigated a hundred and fifty, or I should say, we reviewed a hundred and fifty-seven of them. Not all hundred and fifty-seven of them became all-out investigations. But just the number alone, that's the increase, is a bit alarming to us. And again, on one hand, you could look at it, well, they're reporting it and that's good, but the bottom line is, is that there are things happening out there to our seniors and vulnerable adults that are concerning enough to people that they call us. And here's another partnership that we have with the high school. And as you can see, the trend line is indicating that we're having more and more calls and things to deal with out at the high school. And just like with the hospital, I would state to you that if we didn't have a school liaison officer out there, those four-hundred-and-fifteen calls would fall on the hands, or in the hands of the patrol officers, which would, again, pull them out of the community for momentarily to deal with this situation. Now, I would say that not all four-hundred-and-fifteen would be that way, because some of these are self-initiated by the officer and only are initiated because the officer is there all the time interacting with those students and staff.
Does that officer also go to the middle school sometimes?
They do, they do, they have some time out at the middle school and they're in close connection with Mr. Grinna out there and his staff to make sure that that balance is met between the high school and the middle school. Not to get into a whole nother conversation, but obviously you've all heard and seen that there's legislation out there of possible added dollars. And so we've had some brief conversations, both with the school district and the charter schools, and of their their consideration, any way of expanding programs such as this, but again, that's a long way off yet, but those are possibilities.
Charter school, that's a good comment, too, right now they're not benefiting from the program at all?
They are not, they are not, with this exception, is that if they call about a specific child issue, we try to use as best we can our school liaison officer because our school liaison officer knows more about all of the kids in the community than any one individual officer. So we try to keep that consistency piece, doesn't always work, but that's what we try to do. Here's another concerning issue, child protection intakes. Again, it's just initial reports, so there was, last year there were three-hundred-and-sixteen of them. And an intake can come in a number of different ways, it can come directly into us, it can go directly to McLeod County Child Protective Services, and there's a safety net in there. They get an initial report, they send it to us, we get an initial report, we send it to them. It's a way to make sure that there isn't a case that falls through the cracks, that it gets looked at and investigated. And probably the most upsetting part of that is, out of those three-hundred-and-sixteen cases, twenty-four children were put on health and welfare holds by the county, and forty-one children were removed from the home.
And Dan, is this drug and alcohol abuse more than likely?
It runs the gamut, but drug and alcohol abuse is a significant piece of that, you're right, John. It is, and again, it is not just our community, I want to keep stressing that, this is becoming a nationwide issue.
And as far as the increase, is that just kind of along those same lines as far as the causes or the?
Yes, yeah, and in the report that you'll get after this, that it does break down in a couple of different categories in regards to what types of initial child protection intakes, and same with vulnerable adults.
So that's
Yeah. Speaking of some of the causes of children being removed from the home, we are a member of the Southwest Metro Drug Task Force. We have a Hutchinson police officer that's signed as an agent with this task force. McLeod County Sheriff's Office also has a deputy who is assigned to that. And that's one of the reasons why you see McLeod County, and let me back up. The first four counties that you see there, Carver, Scott, McLeod, and Hennepin, we make up Southwest Metro Drug Task Force. The reason that number is so high is we have two officers assigned in that, and they're doing some very, very good work. They are, to coin a phrase, they have their nose to the grindstone in regards to trying to deal with these cases. That can also, as John can attest, also be long and drawn-out issues before a given issue with an individual or a given neighborhood is resolved.
But thank you very much, because I think that has been successfully dealt with.
Yes, and the other thing I'll point out with this chart, so you see that there were some cases in Dakota, Ramsey, Sibley, and other counties. And that's really just an outline of, you know, the drug problem doesn't just reside with inside the borders of Hutchinson or with inside the borders of McLeod County. You know, sometimes our cases start in Hutchinson and take us into Dakota, Sibley, other counties, even into the metro area.
So what, how many of those, one-twenty, are from Hutchinson?
In regards to that, so there were seventy, excuse me, I think that this year it was seventy-seven cases were Hutchinson cases.
So it's still, how many other officers are involved? We have two?
We have two, Carver County has one, Scott County really has two because Scott County has a deputy, and Shakopee provides some staff, and then Scott County has the commander. So there are multiple, there are multiple people that are involved in this.
You just think population-wise, and Hennepin only has thirty-seven, it's like
Dan, isn't there additional drug task forces out there, though?
Statewide, they're spread all over the state where they are. And Hennepin, we don't currently have an agent from Hennepin, West Hennepin. And that can ebb and flow, and that's what, the other thing I want to talk about these numbers is, so things can change. Sometimes our department, just using Hutchinson, our department can be staffed so, have such a staffing shortage that we have to remove that officer from the task force for periods of time to patrol. That hasn't happened for a while, which has been good. And, not to go down another topic, but that additional officer that council granted us has had a significant impact with that, so thank you very much for that. But the other piece that can come into play is, all of these officers that are assigned to this task force are on rotating positions. So they're only in there for anywhere from two, three years. Well, so our current officer is very experienced, and I think the numbers show it. Ultimately, he will be, he will cycle out and somebody else will come in. And that new person's going to be very inexperienced and has a learning curve. And so the numbers probably will reflect when we see those new officers come into place.
We will probably always have an officer assigned typically in McLeod County?
It is certainly my hope, yeah, and to be honest with you, we've only had one officer assigned, and that's been from Hutchinson for a number of years. About three years ago, I think it was, the sheriff's office stepped up and put an additional, one of their deputies in there, which gave us two in McLeod County. Yeah, it's been very beneficial. Now, the nice part about it is, what we've also been able to do, too, is the sheriff's office replaced their agent earlier, ours is still there for a short period of time. So that learning curve can happen a little bit quicker because they can work together and bring that new deputy up to speed, and then the reverse will be true when we cycle out, that deputy who will have had some experience can help train our officer in regards to the investigations.
Are we still seeing meth, home?
Yep, absolutely, marijuana, cocaine, meth, and heroin are, they're the four drivers. The unique part about it is
Which were those drivers? I'm sorry.
The four drivers, marijuana, cocaine, meth, and heroin. The unique thing that we, and nobody has an answer for this, in all, the other three counties that were, that are involved in the task force have seen an increase in heroin, we have not, in McLeod County.
But, I mean, are you grouping opioids with heroin, I mean, that's the same?
Right, it's a group, but, so, and then obviously there was prescription medications that are out there and all too prevalent. And then for eighteen, our goals, obviously, to continue to enhance that nuisance ordinance program, collaborate with the city engineers and MINDOT in regards to the Highway seventeen, or the Highway fifteen project, which is coming up all too soon, and review the Hutchinson police policies, we have to do that, it's been a couple of years since that's occurred. Sergeant Johnson retired at the end of this year, or the end of two thousand and seventeen, so we have a promotional process to replace that sergeant's position. And then again, at some point in time, we hope to take delivery in the SRT truck and put that into service. And with that, I'll take any questions.
For the sergeant position, do you always promote from within, or do you like advertise it and hire from outside?
They have, the department has hired from outside at times, and that's not out of the question. In this particular case, we have a number of people who are more than qualified, and so we are going to promote from within. We have, I think there's five or six for sure that have applied for that position. So, really, the department just has to take a look at, you know, what the department has to offer. If people are ready to assume that position, and then it benefits the department to promote from within.
Dan, I put you on the spot a little bit, but this is the reason why we have you here. You know, it's interesting, and I think it might even been an article the paper did, but, you know, we hear that we have just a horrible drug problem in Hutchinson that's beyond the level of other communities.
Yes.
And your response to that is?
Absolutely not. Are there drugs in this community? Absolutely. If somebody wants drugs bad enough in this community, they can get them. That's the realities. It's that same way in every community across this country, unfortunately. The best that we can do is continue to be as proactive as we can and go after this and try to address the issue. Here's the one thing I'll, my little words of warning or advice. We as a community, not just Hutchinson, but communities across the country, turn this as it's a kid issue. All these high school kids, these middle school kids, we arrest far more adults for drugs and alcohol than we arrest juveniles. Since I became the police chief in two thousand and four, every year at least once, if not multiple times, we've done searches of the high school, both out in the parking lot, in lockers, throughout the building, and we virtually find nothing. Now, I don't expect that somebody who's using drugs will use the high school as a stash facility, but, over fourteen years, and we really haven't come across anything. That's not saying that there's not drugs, that young people aren't using them, but it is not to the level that people want to make it seem with our youth. And again, if we want to look at the drug problem, we have to look at all of us in our community as adults, not just
Yeah, you just have to look at the McLeod County in custody sheet, and you can see where the ages are.
Yes, yeah.
Anything else for Dan? Anything really you need, or?
No, I, actually
Hang on a second, you just asked.
I should have prepped for that question. No, you know, the reality is, our police department is, we have sufficient staff, we have sufficient equipment, we have training dollars to do the things that we need to do, and so from that perspective, we are really light-years in leading in regards to what some agencies have available to them. So, thank you very much, obviously, we all know and have had those conversations about facilities, and those conversations are underway, and that will happen in due time, and that'll be good, too. But, yeah, we as a police department are sitting in a real good situation, staffing and support-wise.
And as far as like nine-one-one services, all that federal money, where are we at with that? We need to replace radios, we
Well, those are going to be some questions, yeah, you know, that technology is great. It's expensive, and it comes around all too often to be replaced. And so there are some CIP projects in the works to try to replace all of that equipment, and there are some decisions that ultimately will need to get made as we move forward here.
Nine-one-one calls, hundred percent coming in by phone, or starting to
Yeah, I think, you know, there's a conversation that's going on, right now Wasika County is taking all of McLeod County's nine-one-one text possibilities, and we've only had a couple of those come in at the end of the year. One or two things has to happen, McLeod County either has to take that on for all of McLeod County, or we all have to start paying Wasika. Conversation is, is McLeod County is going to take that piece on. The unique part about it is, we can take that, we can take that on, but right now, anyway, the technology doesn't, it just comes in as a text call and it gives us a location, you know, latitude and longitude, it doesn't say, well, this is inside the city of Hutchinson, so go to this call. So, right now, it's going to be coming into the county, it'll have to be deciphered if that's a county call or a hutch call, and then be sent out.
How about the body camera program?
It's
Been going well?
Yeah, it's been working fabulous. The officers have done a great job in regards to, you know, turning them on right away, that's not an issue like you've seen in the news. The cars, the cameras in the cars, you know, obviously they come on anytime the lights and siren go on, officers can manually turn them on. The downloads are easy, it's really easy for the officers to download them, and/or what we call tag them and mark them for, so the right video goes to the right case and allows prosecutors to be able to view those videos without having us to make a copy and send it over, and so I think it wins.
It's just been a phenomenal assistance in criminal prosecution. And it just eliminates any question about who said what and where things were, and, you know, the courtrooms have been updated to allow that technology to be used now, and just so helpful.
Good to hear.
Yeah, the only question that we still have out there, and a lot of it, we're waiting for what the legislature ultimately decides to do, but as part of that, we have to do an audit of our program every two years. And there is still some debate in regards to, it says by an outside entity, and what is an outside entity? So can Dan Hatton's police department audit Wilmer's police department? Or do we have to have it done by a private firm? Can it be done by the state auditor's office? There are some conversations that that might occur. So we're waiting to see just exactly what the results of that ultimately what the results of that ultimately end up being, but that, that will be another part that has to be, uh, implemented in this program.
Dan, do we have, uh, new officers?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Maybe it'd be nice to have them come and introduce themselves sometime when, if you could have that.
We could, we can do that if we started right now, because in, uh, on April eighteenth, we have a swearing in ceremony. We generally hold a swearing in ceremony once a year, um, and we have thirteen people that we have to swear on. Not all of them police officers, but we have thirteen people, so, um, we can start moving that forward, but I don't know that we want to march thirteen people into the city council and have that conversation.
One or two a night. And I will say, it might be something that, you know, I've had the privilege of being able to assist the chief in that. It might be something, just invite you guys if you want to come and.
I mean, having thirteen here would be no different than discussing invocations.
Well, that's true. Hopefully my staff would, would, uh, make it smooth and easy, but, um, yeah, you, and you are, as a council, you are invited to, um, attend and, and watch the, the swearing in ceremony. It is, um, it's, it's impressive. We like it. We, it, it has some impact, and, and, uh, hopefully it has some impact on our new officers in regards to the, the role and responsibility that they're taking on.
That'd be, that'd be great. I'd appreciate that invitation. Let us know when it is.
Sure.
You know, when I've had the opportunity to be there, you really just see the team aspect of it. I mean, there's different positions, different roles, you know, you have new people being mentored and coached, and it's, uh, I'm sure the fire department in the same way, and, uh, but it's pretty, uh, nice situation to see, and.
Yeah, it, you know, it, it is, it's certainly that impactful for our new people, but I think it's impactful for us, our entire staff to, to kind of be refreshed in regards to the importance and that role that, that we all take on.
Anything else for Dan?
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Dan, as long as you're here and you patiently waited, why don't we do fifteen point five, the one for the specialty event? Let's, let's do that quick, then you can.
Sure. Um, and, and I don't have the paperwork right in front of me, but, so, so what you have is, um, a, a gentleman by the, by the name of, uh, last name of Lyle Mac, or is it, uh, Hutchinson native Lyle McAdams, was the individual who was, was killed in the line of duty.
Yep.
And, um, and so his brother, it was fifty years ago, his brother is having a, a, a celebration, uh, in honoring his service at the Veterans Memorial Park, and, and they want to do it on, uh, on April, Saturday, April twenty first, which is why they're kind of the short notice. We're trying to accommodate this need. There will be, uh, ceremony in Veterans Park. Probably the most unique thing will be, uh, there's a plan to land a, uh, military Huey helicopter in the parking lot, um, right across the street from the, the park, which will, uh.
Miss the light poles.
We, we have, uh, we've had numerous conversations with the pilot, and he is very aware of those light poles. He assures us that, uh, that it won't be a problem. Uh, and so the request is, is that, uh, that they obviously be able to utilize the park, that they close, um, the street in front of there, so that they can have, um, some motorcycles from the, from the, uh.
Patriot.
Patriot Guard, uh, park there. And the Patriot Guard will also be escorted, if approved, by the Hutchinson Police Department from the fairgrounds, um, northbound on highway fifteen, and then into the, into the park. So you can see there, there's really kind of the, the pieces that need to be, um, approved is closing Second Avenue northeast for the duration of that event. Um, the parade permit, technically the, the, the Patriot Guard will be a parade, and then obviously the authorization to utilize the necessary police personnel to, to make sure this event goes off, um, smoothly.
Lyle's, Lyle's, uh, widow and daughter will be in attendance, so.
Looking at the forecast, the Patriot Guard might need snowmobiles.
Yeah.
Chill motorcycle ride for those guys.
Yeah, it could be, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Chad, second by Steve to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, thanks, Dan.
I just mentioned Dave Scoog. This is the Huey that everybody thought he was talking about going into the park, not the Cobra.
Well, when you see this helicopter land on the park, you'll know why it didn't, why it probably wasn't.
Wasn't, yeah.
In the park. This thing is big.
Yeah, they're harder to get to.
Yeah, and that's, it's huge. I remember that was, part of my concern was how big those were, and, um.
Uh, ours too.
Not that I'm crazy about the gunship, but, uh, you know, size wise, it fits good.
Yeah, we will, uh, we'll watch him do it.
Yeah, it'll be.
Hopefully it's all good.
It'll be great to see.
Okay. Um, here's the other thing is, is I will, uh, hand out copies of the, of the year report, and then, just so you know, um, if not tomorrow, by the end of the week, uh, a copy of our report will be online, and so that, so that community can, um.
There's a lot of information there.
Lot of information.
Good.
Okay.
Thanks, Dan. Under new business, we have resolution number one four eight seven five.
Thanks, Dan.
Resolution accepting bids and awarding contract for the two thousand eighteen water lift, wastewater lift station improvements, project letting number thirteen, project number eighteen dash thirteen.
Good night, huh?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, like Mayor Forseer mentioned, we're here to quickly entertain our project award for our twenty eighteen wastewater lift station improvements. Uh, you might remember a few years ago, or a couple of years ago, we did a, uh, comprehensive wastewater, uh, lift station study, and it led by, uh, Tim here in the audience, and, uh, and, uh, with the, with the help of a consultant, it gave us a good look at where we're at lift station wise. That our lift stations hadn't been touched for many years, the vast majority of them. Uh, last year, we did address, uh, the, uh, the Harmony Lift Station. Uh, this is the, what we call the Outer Lake Lift Station out there by, uh, South Grade Road and Lakewood Drive intersection, right there, prior to you getting to the, the bridge area. Uh, and with that, we scoped a project to address the needs at this lift, lift station. Similar to the Harmony Station, uh, we are addressing the pumps, uh, the panels slash controls, and there are some structural improvements. However, we are only, the bid, this bid only applied to the structural improvements, uh, little bit of site improvements, and then, uh, the panels and controls. We are procuring the pumps outside of this through a, a relationship we've established with the vendor. We want to bring uniformity to our, to our equipment in these lift stations. That's something we've struggled with over the years, you know, not only the pumps, but the controls, the panels and the like. So with that, we were, uh, fortunate to get, uh, receive six bids back in March twenty first. Cause you don't get six bids, obviously, there.
I haven't seen this number in quite a while on anything. Uh, the engineer's estimate was, uh, just over a hundred and fourteen thousand. A little bid was R and R Excavating, uh, here in Hutchinson, obviously, uh, just around a hundred and eleven thousand. Uh, actually, the contractor, contractor that did the vast majority of the work, uh, last year, uh, was Minnesota Mechanical Solutions. They're, uh, with the second lowest bid at one thirteen, and then we had a variety of contractors, uh, a little bit higher. So with that, uh, we, uh, between city staff and the consultant, our technical consultant, Nero Engineering, uh, reviewed the bids. We do believe the bid is responsive. Uh, you might have noticed that in the, uh, recommendation letter from Nero in the packet, uh, they recommend awarding to, to R and R Excavating. Uh, they have done this type of work. They have general contracted this type of work, so, uh, we have a comfort level there, and with that, we would recommend awarding the project.
Kent, this is, uh, number one, or what of what? How many lift stations?
It is number two of.
Eleven.
What's that? Eleven.
Yeah, eleven.
Yeah.
Eleven remote lift stations.
Eleven remote lift stations.
So how many are, are getting the same pumps and stuff?
Well, there's two groupings within the study. Um, over the course of time, we'll address the first group that have the, is it six?
Five lift stations will get this pump. So first, these first two are of the same size and nature, and then there will be three more that receive two each of the same pump. So this will afford us to possibly have a spare pump at the ready, which we don't have that capability right now, because as lift stations were built through time, they were low bid, and so everything's of, we never made it.
Correct. All right, thanks, Ken.
From the control standpoint, since things get obsolete, especially the electronics.
Yeah, we, we spent.
Yeah, have some concern of everything having to be replaced at the same time, once you get there.
We've spent a lot of time between city staff, Tim, myself, uh, Nero, uh, Engineering, uh, and then a, uh, a consultant, uh, Lake Engineering?
Spring.
Spring Lake Engineering, who is a, really a, a smaller control electronical, controls electronical programmer, consultant that, uh, came highly recommended to us. And you might remember, we, we actually approved some fairly sizable consultant agreements with them, probably almost two years ago now. So they've been in the background, and we've really focused on doing this right, not only from the lift station standpoint, but how these lift stations will connect to the main plant, our SCADA system, and then even looking a step forward, what's the eventual evolution of our SCADA system? We know we have some needs there. That system hasn't performed, I shouldn't say all that, well, maybe not all that consistently since it was put in place back in oh eight. So we, we see everything coming together at some point in the, in the future to be able to better control and monitor our pump, just our lift stations out on the system, and then that'll tie into the new and improved controls at the plant, ultimately.
Get more consistently through the whole.
Well, I'd allow Tim to sleep through the nights without alarms going off, so.
No, we don't want that to happen.
And other staff members.
Yeah.
It's quite a range of prices.
Yeah, I think what we had here, we had two contractors that were really interested, and then we might have four that, uh, were doing a little bit of fishing, I guess, so.
And it looks like there were some people that didn't bid it, because you had multiple, you had nine, nine at the pre-bid meeting?
Yeah, you're exactly right, John. So, yeah, there were some others that, uh, met the pre-bid requirement that didn't bid it in the end. But, yeah, we're happy with seeing six bids, by all means.
Make a motion to approve.
Second up.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right. Thank you.
Resolution number one four eight seven six. Resolution accepting bids and awarding contract for the two thousand eighteen airport improvement project, letting number fifteen, project number eighteen dash fifteen. Evening, John.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is, uh, a project that has two parts to it. Um, one is the site preparation, and then the second is an eight-unit nested key hanger. Um, we did get two bids, and the low bidder was Kramer Trucking and Excavation. Um, and that was, uh, about fifteen percent below what our estimate was. We were kind of afraid our estimate was going to be actually a little low. Um, as you can imagine, um, from what you're hearing on, from the national news, the steel pricing and, is very difficult to nail down right now, and so we were very happy with these bids. Uh, both outfits have, uh, pretty significant experience in airports and, and construction on airports. So, uh, where we're at with the project itself is that, uh, tonight, we would recog- recognize Kramer as the low bid and award contingent on, uh, funding. Um, right now, we know, um, with the arrangements that we have and with the agreement with Tracy that's included in the packet tonight, that we can for sure do a schedule one of, of the project, um, which would be the site preparation. We're still, um, talking to FAA and also, um, looking to secure additional federal funding from other airports or other sources that, um, would allow us to do both, uh, schedule, uh, one and two. Uh, that would be the most advantageous for us because of the favorable pricing that was included in the bids. However, we don't have that, all of the answers yet. So, um, tonight's award is just to recognize that Kramer was a low bid and that, um, we're going to award contingent on, uh, funding. The final decision on the project would be in, uh, probably the last meeting in May, which would meet the, meet the, uh, timeline for, uh, uh, holding the bids, and then at that point, we should know, uh, where we're at, uh, relative to federal funding. Um, so at that meeting, then we can determine whether we want to award, um, any of the schedules, schedule one or sk- schedule two or both. So, um, those are, those are choices that we have down the line from this point.
But right now, tonight, we're being asked to approve the bids and award the contract.
Award, award contingent on federal funding, yes, which is very, very common, because, um, the federal funding is based on the actual bid pricing. Uh, we can, we can't put a, an estimate out there and say, can you fund this? We have to use actual bid pricing. So it's a very common, um, circumstance in the airport world that we go out for bids before we actually go to the federal government and say, here's our project, can you fund it? Um, just because of the way the grants are, are written.
But you said, final decision will be in May.
Right, either end of May, first part of June, uh, depending on when the magic date is based on the bid opening.
Yeah, it's ninety days, right, John?
Ninety days.
Yeah, I'm just doing the math. I know we spoke before. It'd actually get us through June.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah.
So we should be okay.
That'll come back to us?
Yes.
That'll come back to you, like John mentioned. This is just contingent, which we've done on many airport.
Yes.
FEA, FAA related projects in the past, you know, that's a two-step award process. So this, it will come back for your formal award of the project and the, the funding mechanisms.
Correct.
Ultimately.
Correct. We'd have to, uh, identify the funding sources for you.
Yeah.
You know, what, what our part is, what the state's part is, and the federal's part.
And at that point, you'd probably know whether the other three airports were, were able to transfer, because we need another four fifty to do the complete thing.
Correct.
That's three more airports I'd hit.
Yeah, in, in April here, uh, it will be going up to the McColla Conference, and that's kind of where the warehouse is of, uh, you know, we sit around and trade AIP money. No, there's a, there's a concerted effort by airport managers throughout Minnesota.
Trade don't give.
To keep the federal money that's allocated to Minnesota in Minnesota.
Yeah.
And we've done that many times where we've offered.
Back and forth.
Our, our unused AIP out. So I'd be looking for that, uh, from other airports while we're there, and then, uh, we can also do a little begging if, if needs be. And then also, uh, we have, uh, been in conversations with FAA regarding the potential for utilizing future AIP entitlements, um, to cover this, having not yet received the final answer on that, so.
So if we didn't have a clear identification, funds we'd build.
Yes, we can make that decision then at, at that next time we get together to determine whether, what, if any of these parts we would choose to do at that point, so. Uh, our hope is that we can, we can put something together and, and get a federal funding package that would allow us to do both, just because of the favorable numbers that we got on, on the construction, so.
So why doesn't the resolution say contingent on, or does it?
Or does on the board action, except low bid contingent on federal and state.
This is the standard city, city one, so.
Yeah, you're probably, I gave my copy to John.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we had.
I would, I would recommend that if you want to approve that, you approve and just make sure that's included in your motion.
Yes, exactly. Correct. Yep.
Good catch.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve contingent on staff in the city securing appropriate funding.
Alright.
And bringing that back for final approval.
I will second that.
Alright, thank you.
Motion by Steve, second by John to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried?
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Yep.
Uh, resolution number one, four, eight, five, two. Resolution approving local bridge replacement program grant agreement.
Yes, finally, we were able to arrive at this with MINDOT staff. It's been alluded to, I think, several times as we've, uh, uh, worked through the Second Avenue Bridge project. Uh, that, that's been awarded. Uh, you might have noticed earlier in the, the, uh, meeting, the, within the consent agenda, we did have the consultant, uh, services agreement for the construction observation and, uh, inspection. And yeah, finally, this is our, our grant agreement. And actually, in the end, once we figured out what's eligible, well, actually, what's participating, what's non-participating, uh, in their language within the agreement, uh, we arrived at a final grant amount of four hundred twenty-seven thousand, two hundred seventy-five dollars. So, uh, it was about twenty grand or so more than the initial communication some months ago. So, yeah, worked out in our favor. So with, with that, uh, the, these monies will go towards the construction, uh, portion costs of the, of the project. These, they need to be spent on the construction. There's no issues there, uh, as far as a project delivery, funding standpoint. And, uh, the remainder of the construction, uh, as we noted within the agreement, will be picked up with, uh, state aid funds. So, and then, uh, the consultant agreement will work through that, how that's funded. I anticipate that'll be more than likely picked up with bonding dollars. So, um, we, we typically utilize our state aid funds also purely for construction, uh, costs. So with that, I recommend approving the, the agreement, uh, and there is the resolution that, uh, the mayor alluded to that is attached to this.
It's interesting, you mentioned they use the, um, state aid for construction, but, I mean, the bonding, you're paying that for fifteen years or?
Yeah, and it, and it's more, I just do that to make note of it. It's all a balancing act, obviously. It's all in one big overall total project cost. But it's one to make note of, you know, when we split things up and we have these different funding mechanisms involved, you know, that's just how we're gonna have to. You know, I could, we could, uh, pay for the consultant contract with state aid dollars. We haven't typically done that. There's more process to that. It's not as easy as just utilizing the state aid dollars to pay for construction costs. That's a lot more straightforward. Once you start utilizing those to pay consultants, it, there's more process and a little more scrutiny to it, too.
Um, anything with, just thinking how the spring or lack of spring has been going, is, it's probably, did it turn out to be a good thing with the water pipe to, uh?
Horizontally.
Delay that a little bit?
Yeah, we worked out that agreement. Uh, is it a good thing? I don't know. I guess another month or so. Tell us. Whether it was good or bad. Uh, I think it was, it was a good understanding from the contractor's perspective, but we're not able to get it done by June fourth, when our br- actual bridge replacement contract comes into play. You know, that's our stated start date for this contractor. You know, that's not a good thing. But I'm confident, you know, we're getting a gradual melt, and I think tiles, hopefully upstream of us, aren't too far from letting loose, I guess, or at least maybe if we get an inch or two of rain this weekend might help our cause, obviously, to push some tiles open and just get things to wash through and melt a little quicker. So, we'll see what the weather, weather does. I, I talked to the contractor a week or so ago, and he's confident that, you know, flow will drop, and they're, they're confident they can get in there. They just need flow to drop a little bit more, and they'll do what's necessary to get it done.
They got everything marked.
Yeah, everything's marked. They just, uh, they want the, uh, least amount of water flowing by them as possible.
So a million dollars, and it'll have a bike trail on the side of it.
Excuse me?
A million dollars, and it'll have a bike trail on the side of it.
Yes, we, that alternative was what was in the scope. Exactly.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second that.
Motion by Chad, second by John to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, calling special meeting to complete, uh, strategic planning session on April twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen.
As you recall, we said about an hour and a half, two hours left. Um, we're actually gonna conduct this at the fire hall. Because they've got, uh, licensing in here that day, so.
Make motion to approve special meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by John, second by Chad to approve the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Uh, we don't have any minutes. Uh, John, you have anything else for us tonight?
What's their question?
Tim, do you have anything for us?
Thankfully, I do this mayor, um, as I was sitting, and we brought up lift stations. And wanted to use this opportunity, yeah. Wanted to use this opportunity to kind of do a little PSA. Um, came to light a couple of weeks ago, and we had half the city, um, have a power outage in the morning that, uh, I was getting ready for work in my home, and all of a sudden, our automated, uh, dialer system called me so sweetly with her voice, rambling on about how many lift stations didn't have power. So we just, uh, it, it got brought up that, uh, you know, a lot of these lift stations, remote lift stations are adjacent or near, uh, residences and properties, and they do have warning lights on them. So when there is a trouble with the lift station, there is a red beacon on the top of the, the cabinet, the gray steel cabinet, uh, adjacent to the wet well, that does light up, usually in flashes. So I just wanted to reach out that sometimes, you know, we've had instances where the radio systems go down also. And so we don't, we're not made aware of a problem with the station unless somebody should happen to say something. So, um, just to the residents that live near those that, uh, if they would happen to notice that these red strobes are, are blinking and blinking for some time without a nice white truck with our Packard logo on the side of it and, and amber strobes going, and, uh, we hop out and look like we're going into that cabinet to check things out, that maybe they give us a call during business hours at the plant, or, um, call the police department during the off hours, so.
Want to give out your cellphone, maybe?
Well, we'll not give their cellphone out just yet.
And I, and I think the easiest thing, like, Tim, no, and this, this is a good thing to call out, because we do have some, like I mentioned earlier, there's some problematic communications out there. And I would just say, from a simplicity standpoint, just call the police
Police Department.
dispatcher, and then they know how to funnel the calls down to, to the wastewater plant, and then we have a, a staff tree, obviously, for them to get a hold of people directly then.
So again, at night, the PD then to?
Yeah, or even during the day.
Basically, during the day, that would be the one number that you'll get a hold of somebody, and they know how to get a hold of us, or maybe if the streets issue or, or water plants. So they'll, they'll get a hold of the, you know, the appropriate personnel, the remedy of the situation, so.
I was just thinking, Chad, we've never really acknowledged him for the great clothing that he wears for, uh?
Oh, geez.
Yeah, it's rather disappointing, your performance in a hockey tournament, though, but.
Sorry, that was just a.
Sure, he comes up and tries to be nice, and you try to make him. Then you try to make him cry.
I am being extremely, I am being extremely nice to him, so. He gets brownie points on my side over here.
John O'Pall, like, that's a shot at the University of North Dakota, that's our, our administrator.
It's his shot. And he gives them. I, I started it to compare all the clothing that he wears. That's NESU all the time. He tells me about football, and I tell him about hockey.
So if there's any flashing lights on it, just say, I'm gonna call the police department.
Yeah, it's generally the easiest thing to do.
Unless they're red and blue, then don't call me. Something different entirely.
Okay, alright, thanks, Tim. Kent, do you have anything for us?
Yeah, I'll just, quickly, uh, yeah, Highway fifteen, Main Street, just want to touch on schedule. Like I mentioned earlier, we're focusing on streetscaping, landscaping, and the likes of. That's getting, getting underway. I guess it was earlier during the workshop. Um, looking forward, we anticipate a public meeting probably in June, and that'll be streetscaping, landscaping focused. And then, from the council standpoint, and I know, I, I know we have some budget meetings coming up, Matt, but just thinking as far as bringing that streetscaping, landscaping concepts and plans, as that's being developed, the council possibly in June timeframe? I think the budget meeting's May.
First budget meeting will be the second meeting in May.
Yeah. So I guess just looking forward, just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, that maybe that first meeting in June could be a workshop on that front.
So can you remind us again, um, you know, decision times? I mean, the project's not till twenty twenty, and now we're working on our budget for nineteen. You know, would, obviously, looking forward, you know, is this the time then that some of those other decisions need to be made? Uh, from MINDOT's planning staff and our s- planning? Is it nineteen? You know, as far?
Yeah, the, the project will ultimately be, be bid in November of nineteen, is the target. It, that basically implies that plans will pretty much be finalized six months or maybe shortly thereafter beforehand. So we're talking May, June of nineteen, and now you start doing the math backwards. We're, we're within a year of everything being finalized, and so we really need the next three months, give or take, to figure out our streetscaping, landscaping. Now, the geometric layout has been established. And then, what'll be happening in parallel to that is city staff is underway doing the utility. You know, we've gone out and surveyed property owners, sewer and water service-wise, and we're gonna start to inventory that information along with the, uh, record information we have, you know, and figure out and have conversations with property owners, what they want to see done with their sewer and water services, and how we do that from a constructibility standpoint, assessments, and start to, to balance all those aspects. And then as we're laying out that utility work, you know, three, four months from now, when we have a good idea of how we're gonna deliver the, the utility improvements, that'll really start to drive the phasing of the project. And it really boils down to how do we need to construct the sanitary sewer system? You know, and the different pipe intersections and, and the layout of the existing system. That'll start to drive the phasing, which then gets into the construction, uh, plans and how they're set up in different phases and signage and detours and the like, so.
So, but we're talking, I think, Steve, what you're getting at is if the city is going to be investing financially, does that need to be in our two thousand nineteen budget or two thousand twenty budget?
It would be in our tw- twenty twenty budget, is what we've identified, yeah. And, and we're well situated from a utility standpoint. Andy and I have been talking quite a bit about this project for the last few years, and, and I think, like I mentioned before, uh, state aid funds also. We can u- utilize our municipal state aid funds on an off-system improvement, if it's a state trunk highway or a county state aid highway corridor. So we can also utilize those funds, and then we'll obviously also have, uh, some assessment revenues involved. And, you know, we've been talking to preliminarily with, with property owners about that and what those costs, what those rates might be. And then, uh, you know, we'll still have our bonding dollars, too. We'll treat this project like any other project as far as the city process. We'll have the public hearing. We'll ultimately have an assessment role and award and, and the likes.
But through that, there, who knows what choices are made, and maybe there's other dollars that, from community improvement, or, you know, as part of the plan, as that all starts getting developed.
Exactly. I, I think we're well situated, and, and really, the MINDOT cost participation policy was, you might have noticed, the state legislature basically made MINDOT, required them to revise their cost participation policy a few years back with municipals and, and, and how the cost sharings arrived at. And it, it made that process a little bit more favorable to the locals. You know, so that, that's a good thing, you know? I don't think it was leaps and bounds more favorable, but, you know, we're gonna be well situated going into this, I'm confident. And, and in the end, and a lot of it's gonna come back to these landscaping, streetscaping discussions, what amenities are arrived at, what improvements on that front, because obviously, the vast majority of those costs are gonna clearly fall in the city's column. So, and that'll really be a, a big driver on the overall city cost participation within this project. Uh, other than that, just wanted to make note of this. I know MINDOT was contacted, uh, on the Bluff Street and the southbound right turn, and I hear about this dynamic, and it's kind of bothered me a little bit over the years. More northbound right turn at Bluff and Highway seven, and the, and the lack thereof of a designated right turn at, at both northbound and southbound. And that was a conscious decision that was made ten years ago by, by MINDOT, when they analyzed the traffic volumes and turning movements, and it was questioned, I still recall that, but they made the decision, especially on the southbound, uh, to westbound right, where there were some obvious property limitations and the retaining walls that were already necessary to, to, uh, accommodate that existing property. Uh, I think that there could be a better opportunity on the northbound to, uh, eastbound, but a property owner consulted or contacted MINDOT and alluded to coming to the council and discussing this matter. So I just wanted to call that out. This, it's something staff's been looking at. I've had conversations over the years with MINDOT. I think it's, at this point, we would probably wait until, uh, openers up and running, you know, uh, TDK's been saying they might be upping their staffing levels. You know, I think back to oh six, oh seven, when that was built, TDK was, not TDK, HGI at the time, was still at pretty si- significant staffing level at that point, and when that determination was made. But, uh, we'll keep an eye on that, and just wanted to make note of that, because I, this person alluded to coming before you at some point.
And with that, you see more of the flashing yellow turn?
Yeah, we looked at those within our transportation study, uh, in twenty twelve, uh, in conjunction with the consultant we had on the study and, and MINDOT's traffic signal people out here in the district, and they didn't think the flashing yellows would be beneficial on the Highway seven corridor, and specifically the seven and fifteen corridor. They didn't like that idea. And I think it was more so the north-south movement, where you have the hill and the double left scenario.
I have seen them on double turns. That's why I brought it up, because I've seen that, and.
I've seen it, too, and I honestly, I kind of cringe it. You know, there's a fair amount of them in the West Metro, if you pay attention. I kind of cringe at the volumes and the sightlines of some of the intersections where they're at, but, yeah. I think some people are more conservative than others when it comes to the installation of those, the implementation.
Just need a flashing one-on-one lane.
Yeah. The inside lane, yeah.
I would go for one on the southbound to turn eastbound on south.
Yeah, that's a signal.
I would really like that one.
No, they analyzed them. We, that's something we can bring up again, by all means, but I, I assure you.
Kent, is that, was that a decision that was made by MINDOT?
Yeah, ultimately, it's, it's their signal system.
Yeah.
Yeah. Specifically, in, entirely, it's their signal system, obviously, at seven and fifteen. That's it? That's it.
Thanks, Kent. Mr. Sabora?
I don't have anything else tonight.
Chad?
I don't have anything else tonight either.
I do appreciate your comments on the camera system serves.
Sure, no problem, no, it's worked out really well.
John?
Nothing.
Steve?
A couple of things, bicycle guides, safety guides. I did talk to schools except Northwoods, I still have to get ahold of them and everybody isn't willing to pass them out, so that's like over five hundred of that, so. That was good. One thing I had a thought of and I was gonna bring it up in our strategic planning, but then was the idea of maybe adding, and this kind of came from the downtown, the streetscaping thing is how do we recognize some of our history a little bit? But one thought I had when I looked at it was maybe we could have some of the interpretive signage along the founder's pathway to where the statue is because right now you look at the statues and there's really no signage explaining who the Hutchensons were. And so I did reach out to the community foundation since they're really in charge of that pathway and they seem to be interested in trying to do something too. They want to learn a little bit more about it and what it could entail, but just wanted to put that out there that it might be an opportunity to help tell the story of the Hutchensons a little bit more, but incorporate it with that founder's pathway and connect it to the statue. And then finally, Kent, as far as downtown and the streetscaping thing, you know, one thought long ago, you know, when we were talking about Main Street and having the wider sidewalks was the outdoor dining possibilities that now, you know, we're seeing more of what they're called parklets on where they take up a parking stall and bring the sidewalk out, temporary thing, and MINDOT seems to be where that might be a possibility, where we could do something like that. They're still working through the plan.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, no, thanks for providing that information, like I mentioned. I did bring that to our project management team, you know, and like you said, and I saw the email correspondence you had with one MINDOT staff person and, yeah, you know, it seems like there's some willingness there, at least from that staff person who's obviously, I think, coming from the metro a bit. But, you know, like I was quickly informed at our PMT meeting that this would be a district decision that goes back to, that MINDOT really relies on the district to administer these rules and, but, no, I...
Don't start saying that.
Well, that's what I'm being told, I'm just telling you when I bring these things forward, what I'm told, you know. And, but on the other hand, no, I think these ideas, these thoughts, they need to be put in front of them, honestly. The people at the table, the MINDOT engineers and the likes, and if they're not brought forward by your people like yourself, Steve, they'll never approve them or even acknowledge them for that matter. So I think it's a first step and I think it's something we can continue to talk about and I think it maybe gets brought up at our citizens group again as we're working through the project here. And the other thing is, I think, just from the city's standpoint, they don't necessarily have to be on the state highway because I struggle with some of the freight traffic that goes by, especially if you're out on one of those. But maybe we could have them around the corner on Second Avenue South. It seems like there's some opportunities potentially there, some of the other side streets, there's immediate parking stalls.
You talk about like sitting out there, like in Hopkins, that's where the walkway is basically, so it frees up the regular sidewalk more for the seating area, so, you know.
But the traffic dynamics are different there too, though, they don't have the large trucks. They have a fair amount of volume there in Main Street, Hopkins, but...
Yeah, but the county's gonna do the...
The ring road.
Yeah, the ring road.
Yeah, someday, maybe.
Okay, and lastly, Matt, were you gonna talk about the Ridgewater?
Yeah, I was gonna note it, so.
Thanks.
Thanks, Steve. Matt?
I was gonna note the ARS report, but Morgan did that twice for us, so she beat me to that punch, so. Thank you. Now, there was an invitation that, that's, I think, going out, actually probably to the newspaper, but it came across my desk that Ridgewater College on Tuesday, April twenty-fourth, at six P.M., it's during one of our, it's actually during our next council meeting, they're having what's called the Hutchinson Community Conversation, and this is from, I think it's an instructor, may I pronounce if I torture her name, but is it Gianna Chwant, S.C.H.W.A.N.T., invitation out that they're having, and this is basic with the invitation, says, "We'd like to have an open conversation about our American culture and how it has evolved from the melting pot to more of a salad bowl where we celebrate many heritage and cultures to make up our community. It's about bringing together our communities through conversation. Event is meant to be a safe space to share observations, insights and experiences. Hutchinson Community Conversation will follow our living room conversation format where respectful dialogue bridges cultural commonalities rather than divides people by their differences." And so that's been scheduled for, like I said, Tuesday, April twenty-fourth, at six P.M., which is during the middle of their council meeting. I had sent her an email just saying, hey, that there may be some interest from city council and staff to participate in something like this, unfortunately, it's right during the middle of a city council meeting. She did note that's their intentions to try to do it once in the spring and once in the fall and that she just said they'd keep that in mind in the future with our desire for that, so. That's coming up. This Saturday is the spring cleanup, so I know it's sometimes tough to look outside and think it's spring, but that's one of the reasons why I noted it.
Some stuff out of it.
Yeah, there's some stuff by me that's been out there for a month. Well, they're, they're, they're willing to man, so. So just a reminder to the public that that's the kind of the two items to set out and I know we've got a link on our Facebook page and on our website for what can get put out there. And then lastly, and just wanted to kind of give a heads up to the council, and I'm gonna start pushing this out to the media, but I'm looking at May tenth at five o'clock, which is a Thursday, to have my So You Wanna Be An Elected Official workshop, or no, I want to call it a workshop, but basically it's a seminar. And last year it did go three hours, just, but that'd be from five to eight, where I'll walk.
Scared everybody?
Where I scare everybody away from running for office.
Gets people ready for the duration of a council meeting.
Yeah, gets them ready for the duration. But I'll go through all the ins and outs of being a council member, some of the rules and regulations, the do's and don'ts, kind of for anybody who may be interested in running for city office. And so just wanted to get that out on the calendar, but that's a Thursday, May tenth, that'll be from five to eight. And like I said, I'll start getting stuff out to the media on that, so.
I guess the other thing that I forgot to mention, and I gave you the brochure and you posted on Facebook, senior options tomorrow at the event center, I believe it was, at one o'clock?
That's it for me.
I gotta give a little blurb for the senior center, they're fundraiser, it's gonna be Murder at the Hut Zoo and September said that she'd probably put me in a cage if she could, but...
That'd probably raise a lot of money.
I would think so, I would think so. John, potholes, how, is there a number that people can call and report them or on Facebook or what's the best way?
There's a reporter problem on the website, that's a good way, otherwise calling us directly at two-three-four-four-two-one-nine. We have, when we haven't been plowing snow, we have been out patching.
Raking the lot here.
Yeah, we had crew, crew out today again and burned through several pallets of patch material already. But when you have wet, heavy snow like we had, that generates potholes like crazy. So we're hoping that we get liquid this weekend and not snow again, so.
And the driveways and the parking lots by the malls are not city property?
They're not ours, that's correct, yeah, so.
None of them are?
None of them.
Not all, yeah, not all are.
So, yeah, we realize that and of course, some of the favorite ones are, we've spent quite a bit of time on last few days, so.
So be patient, you guys will get to them.
Yep, so.
Alrighty, thanks, John. With that, that's all I have, have a good evening, in German, so.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Motion by Chad, second by myself to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Pos, carried.